One, this is a city council meeting where you do have a quorum. Minutes and reports are in your packet. Next item would be public comment period. I had nobody signed up for a public comment. So that takes us right to communications and presentations. Are there any communications from council members tonight?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Just wanted a quick reminder and thank everybody. We did our first advanced directive initiative, which has made the making the Wisconsin healthcare power of attorney easy to do. And had a nice, a nice audience of 15 attendees and some of them groups of two or three, possibly more than 20 people. So that's awesome. Wanted to thank everybody who attended and in the hopes that even more people. There are three more groups coming up. One is this coming Monday at 12 noon, middle of the day. Again, this is maybe about a half hour of your time, just even if you just want to learn about it and not necessarily complete. And then we have two dates in April. And those dates are April 12th and the 26th. The 12th is at 12 noon. The 26th is at 5:30. And it's looking like we're going to do this on a fairly regular basis. We're still figuring that out, but it might be a thing that we're offering on a regular basis. So thanks to the Stoughton Wellness Coalition and Stoughton Health for helping partner with this important interest in our health. To sign up for that, you can go to a Stoughton health.com.
Excellent. Thank you, Jean. Any other communications from Alders? And I just had one quick one. I wanted to let Alders know that Dane County is in the process of updating their population projections. So some of the slides I went through at a previous meeting will be updated and I'll present them to you when I get them. And we do have a presentation tonight from the Stoughton Chamber of Commerce. And I think Sarah Ebert is here to do the presentation. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you for having me here. Just to let you know too, Jean, that Stoughton Hospital puts on all their classes. They'll put it on the Chamber events calendar. And right before it goes out, it does post out to Facebook. So that's just another benefit. It's actually for the whole community. If there is an event coming up, we do have an events calendar on our website. And what the computer is very savvy to know that right before it comes, it will send out a little message to Facebook that alerting people that it's coming up.
Thank you so much. And I'm liking the nice existing pathways of communication that exist here in Stoughton. Thank you.
All right. Well, um, the mayor has asked me to do a presentation about what we have done in this last year and where we're going forward. I have met some of you through various different committees, meetings that I've sat in and listened to. For those that don't know me, my name is Sarah Ebert. I am a lifelong resident of Stoughton. I got a degree actually in speech therapy and started out, I worked at Merider Hospital for almost 20 years. And the majority of that is in impatient and outpatient neuro. But then I did switch over into more administration and that made me or that led me to Stoughton Hospital where for the last five years I worked there as the administrative assistant in the foundation. And for the last year and a half of that position, part time, I also worked at the Neighborhood Free Health Clinic as their clinic coordinator. So I knew Laura Trotter and I went and spoke with her about this position. It just seemed like a really good, good fit for me and a lot of my past history fit well also into this position. I have two kids. I have a daughter who is 20, almost 21, is going to school to be a nurse and a a son that's a junior in high school. So he is very excited to be back to school at least part time. What else? Little fun fact about me, my dad was sat on the city council for 12 years back, back in the days. So both my parents have passed away, but they were very involved in Stoughton. I think they would get a kick out of the fact that I am now working at the chamber. But knowing that, going ahead here into my presentation. For the first slide, I want to introduce to you, if you're not familiar with our board, our top people across the top are consist of our executive board. Tricia Cease is our chair with virtual foundry. Joshua Holt with Holt Realty is our vice chair. Deb Punt from Skollin is our treasurer. Ron Jake from Stoughton Trailer is our secretary. And Laura Mays from Stoughton Health is our past chair. And the rest of our board is made up of Kathy Aiken, who's from Associated Bank. Shelley Edgington just got off the exec board. She is from One Community Bank. Matt Griffey with Kicks Unlimited. Eileen Stevens is Fire Up Nutrition. Abby Welsh is with State Farm. And of course we have our mayor and then Dr. Onsager and then Kelly and myself. One nice thing about the chamber is right before I came, actually, I've, I've been at the chamber a year ago today. This is my one year anniversary and right before I came, that board created a brand new strategic plan, which was really nice because they are familiar with the plan. It was all set and ready to go. And so I was able just to step into this and you can see that our mission, they adjusted that and changed it. It's a nice, great mission. The Stoughton Chamber of Commerce serves members by creating an environment for thriving businesses and enterprising leaders. And how does that break down? They have, they created some goals, which is on the next slide. These six different goals. Being very deliberate throughout this last year and going forward to make sure that we hit and cover each one of these goals by enhancing our member experience, by promoting our members, by being advocate for them, to strengthen our organization, to increase the visibility of the chamber and then to be manage the finances. What a year for that when all our events were canceled. So, so were our finances. But we did really actually quite well in, in lieu of that. So what did we do last year? We did not close our doors very long. Like I said, we, I started a year ago today and the following week we closed on a Tuesday because of COVID. But we did resume normal business hours in May. Actually, I think I stayed home for about two weeks. But then the way the chamber is in the depot lots of space, Kelly stayed home for a bit longer. But we had the space that we could work and I really needed to get in there and be in that space and see what all the, all the ins and outs were and work on the database. So it was actually in that regard, it was nice to have that time to just devote to that part of the chamber. But so, yes, as I said, we resumed our business hours, opened it back up to the public in May. Some of the things that we did for the recap for outreach for the community, I would say within the first week and a half, two weeks after the chamber had closed, Kelly had created a tab on our chamber website, which we still have. It's hashtag Stoughton Strong. It's right across the top of the chamber website. And on that tab, the first thing that was created was a Google Doc of listing of all Stoughton businesses, not just chamber businesses with their hours and list and offerings. She reached out to all of them to get a nice list in there. Did some research to get there, reached out to the businesses and said, hey, this is what are, what are your hours right now? What are you, you know, what do you have available? A lot of them did, were restaurants. But just general businesses that were open to the public. And then we asked them to keep that updated because it was, we put it more on the onus than of the business. We have this, please use it, please update it. That went through mid summer to the end of summer. That we had that up there. Also on there, we had a list of anything related to COVID-19 resources, grants, fundings that's still up there. We have the links that can get you to the information you're looking for, not only for businesses, but for our general public. When the construction went on this summer, I was in contact with the DOT and they were sending out weekly updates. And they also sent it to me and that was also posted on our website. At the time, it was weekly, not bi-weekly. I met with the mayor and Chief Lack and Dr. Onsager and then Dan DeGroot from the hospital and his administrative staff. And we just went around by what was, what's going on in their worlds and how we could help each other. It was, I felt very helpful. We continued to do that. Now we meet bi-weekly, but you know, the, the city helps the school and the school helps the hospital and the chamber tries to help everybody. So it was, it was nice to know what, you know, was going on and to fill each other in. Also on that page that Stoughton Strong page, at the holiday time, Kelly had put up on the non-for-profits that we knew of that had like I would get calls like, is there coats for kids this year? Or where can I donate to the food pantry? And so we have that listed also on our website. We did have some events. Hopefully you guys were aware of it. Reason why we opened up in May is because, because even though we didn't have Centami, that does not stop our avid coin collectors and button collectors. We sold enough of the coins and the buttons to cover the cost of them this year. We have, always have some leftover, but that is, I was amazed actually on how many collections are going and people from all over call and say, do you still have the coins and buttons? So we did have that. We also did an opportunity to, we listed all the food vendors that normally would have showed up and gave the opportunity for people to donate if they wanted to. Raised $9,000 that went back to those food vendors. Kelly did daily posts on Facebook highlighting what events would have happened at that time. You know, throughout the week and then the weekend. So putting posts or pass things up there just to keep, you know, in the celebration of it all, race day events, they're the ones who has taken over the runs. They still held a virtual event and then it was kind of fun. Friday was Centami. The King and Queen, Donna and Randy Olson went down, up and down Main Street in their boon ads, popped their head into the stores, said a quick little hello. So that was nice. We also had Coffee Break Festival. It wasn't a one day festival. It was a two week event. We had four businesses. I'm looking at my notes in my computers, blocking it. Sorry. Autumn Pearl, Dunkin' Donuts, Fosters Bakery, Coffee Cup and Pancake Cafe. All were willing to give people a free cup of coffee. Of course, we encourage people to go into the business and have breakfast. And then the people, there was a little, they buy a tasting cup and we also had the ceramic mugs available. Those sold out. But in the tasting cups, there was a voting. So you could vote on your favorite cup of coffee and drop it off on a ballot. And Autumn Pearl won last year. And that was a successful event. Let's see. And then just at the very end on November 27th, we did have Shop Small Saturday. It's not a true chamber event, but the chamber always promotes it. We had a couple of tables that went on one side of the parking lot at City Hall and the other side and had people, some chamber members volunteer and stand by both of the tables. We had 50 bags of swag that our members had donated and handed it, handed out. It was a sunny, nice day. So there was quite a few people out. So that was a lot of fun. Thank you for the, oh. Also, this was, oh, this was amazing. Stoughton Utilities, I'm sure you all remember, received an $18,000 grant from the WPPI Energy. And they were to use that money in any way they saw fit to try to give back to our community. And they got a hold of the chamber and said, hey, why don't we do a matching funds for our chamber bucks? And for those that are not familiar, chamber bucks is something the chamber has always offered. You go in, you buy so much of these chamber bucks, we actually write you a check. And we can either make it out and people give them as gifts or you can make it out to the person. And then when you go to a business, you give the, that check to the business, you endorse the back. It is not a gift card. It is not something where if the check was for $50, you only use 20, that you have $30 more left on it. It's an actual check. So you give it to a business person, they give you back the change. So we thought that was amazing. They said, we'll, we'll match up to $50. So in three weeks, we sold $36,000 in chamber bucks with that promo. It just went like hotcakes and it was, you know, free money. So it was a no brainer. So that was very successful and we continued that. I want to continue, we continued that one more time last year and we will go forward this year, maybe two to three times. Of course, we're not going to have a big grant like that, but we, I'm looking to get like five businesses that would get together and sponsor, or this last past year, One Community Bank sponsored the $2,500 where we were able to match up to $20. So just getting that money back out into the community. That is not any money that the chamber makes. They give us the money and we write them the check and off they go. So we're hoping to have another sponsorship right around Centami. And I'm happy to say the street department is going to be one of the sponsors. 2021 partnership. We have, we're going to continue with the bi-weekly meetings with the city and the hospital and the school. We've all found that very helpful so far. We're going to start in about a couple of weeks. I'm going to have a meeting with actually the mayor and Holly and a few other people. We're going to create a business startup guide. I get, I've gotten questions at the chamber. Some people say, you know what? I want to start a business up in Stoughton and what do I do? And how do I do that? And I know the city has gotten some questions and we have some information here and there, but want to create something. It's not so much on how, how to create a business plan or your logo or that kind of stuff. It's just more the logistics that will have state, city, and then also member, my members information that would be applicable. So if you need to get a permit, if you need to get a license, if you need to look for grants, these are just some of the things. So I'm looking forward to getting, getting that started. Also, I've started last year a collaboration with the schools to strengthen our relationship between our businesses. I, I think it's an easy, an easy no brainer partnership. The school is very excited. I said, I'll be your Rolodex. If you need to talk to somebody, if your teachers would want to have a resource in this industry, I'll find somebody. I have a nice list of businesses already and I just, that's just me mentioning it to them. So I haven't really put out a notice to all businesses that want to be a part of it, but I've gotten very positive feedback. We're getting some help from some Prairie Schools has a very strong school business relationship. And they start actually from first grade on up. So we're starting small and little right now with the high school. So that is, I'm really looking forward to that initiative. I don't know if anybody drove past the chamber today. It wasn't open. It wasn't open because they were fixing the roof on the canopy. Much needed. Because though it hasn't been raining outside of the canopy, it was definitely has been raining inside the canopy the last week and a half. So lots of holes, desperate need of fixing. The chamber has partnered up with the Historical Society and the city to try to do some, some repairs around the depot. They received a grant from the Stoughton Community Foundation and to my surprise, yesterday afternoon, I found out they fixed it today. So I'm excited to see what that's going to look like tomorrow. I will have, let's see, looking forward to 2021. We are going to continue on with our events this year. We, per the Dane County guidelines, we are having our annual community expo that is coming up here in April. It's not going to be, you know, we're going to be driving. It's going to be having a more, our platform will be on our website. It will drive people to people's websites. And if the businesses are open to get them to the businesses, we are having Centami. And not like we typically have it, but we are having a celebration. We are not having a festival. We are not having an event, but a celebration. And I know Kelly will be coming back to you in April, giving you more information regarding that. Planning on our golf outing. Hopefully that is in July. Things will have led up a lot more by then. Coffee Break is in August. We have our wine walk in October, November. We have children's this expo. So we're really looking forward to that. We've increased some opportunities for our members to get involved within the chamber and within our community. And then like I talked, we can continue with the Chamber Bucks matching promo. And at the end of March, the community guide, the 2021 community guide will be coming out. So we can look for that and the great Dane sunset out to all the areas. I think of the 53589. Milling. I think. I think that's it. Does anybody have any questions?
No questions. It must've been pretty thorough.
I kind of thought so. I was sort of like, I need to be quiet now. I was, I talked a lot.
No, Sarah, it was actually great to meet you and to hear everything that you guys accomplished during COVID and your projections future. I'm excited for the chamber. I think it's going in the right direction. So thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Yeah, we really did get a lot done despite COVID and what's coming up and looking forward to. So you can always give me a call or send me an email if anybody has any questions or any input or, you know, anything that you think would be helpful. I, I would welcome any of those kinds of comments.
Yeah, I would just add, it's been great working the last year with Sarah, given her TIF 101 lessons has been especially fun. But just trying to get her up to speed on just, just, I never realized that such a variety of things that comes at the chamber from all different angles and she's really handled it like a champ.
Thank you. You're right. What people think the chamber knows is amazing. Mostly I'm a, I'm a big phone book for a lot of people. I can tell you Walmart's pharmacy number. So, yeah, well, thank you very much. I'm going to stay on, but you're not going to see me anymore. So I'm still here. So you guys have a great rest of the meeting.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to our consent agenda and I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Is there a second? All right. It looks like the only thing that's under our minutes. Any changes in the minutes from anyone? Here are none. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Our next item is all business ordinance five of 2021. This is a second reading from the Plan Commission. Alder Person Caravelo.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is oh, five of 2021. An ordinance amending the zoning classification of certain lands located within the preliminary platting subdivision of Outlot One, Block One, Kettle Park West, the Meadows Edition in the city of Stoughton from RH, which is Rural Holding to SR Five, single family residential and I so move.
Is there a second?
A second.
And there's a second. Alder Person Caravelo, anything you want to cover?
Basically, it's, it's kind of all in the introduction, just amending zoning classification from our board SR Five. So some building can proceed out at KPW. And I'm sure Rodney could enlighten us with any other details or if anyone has questions.
This cul-de-sac was, this outlot was not platted. It was one larger outlot that was created when the original plant was put together. It was envisioned to be a single family development. They moved forward with that, with these six lots being created. And the zoning would allow for the single family residences on these six parcels being created as well.
Okay. Any questions on that? Here's what it looks like in case you forgot. All right. Here are no questions. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? Any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next item is ordinance six of 2021. And this one is a second reading from the Utilities Committee. Alder Person Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Let's see, ordinance six of 2021 ordinance to create section 74 dash two, parent H, parent I. The city of Stoughton coded ordinances relating to replacement of indirect service lateral connections.
Is there a second?
Second.
And then any discussion, Alder Kristen Jensen?
Well, I think we've pretty well discovered in the last meeting. I was just looking now to see if Jill is on. Yes, she is. So I think if there are any questions on it. Director Wees can answer them.
Anything for Jill tonight, anybody? All right. Here are none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed?
And I abstain, Mayor.
Okay. What abstention. All right. That motion does carry. Thank you. Item number seven is new business. And this is a first reading and this one is coming from Public Works. Alder Person Mieske. Alder Person Mieske, it looks like you're muted. Are you on there?
I'm here.
All right.
This is amending section, section 66 dash nine zero four, parent eight of the Stoughton Municipal Code. Public Works recommended approval of this on February 18th, four to zero. And this is the first reading.
All right. Anything you want to highlight? I see it highlighted in yellow here.
Well, it's basically, we are trying to have our detention ponds look a little more natural and less engineered.
You're a man of few words tonight.
I am.
And as I recall, this is one of the council goals that we had this year that I believe came from Alder Person Mieske. And since he chairs Public Works, it worked out really nice.
I thought it did.
Anybody have any questions on this one? Otherwise it'll be back at the next meeting.
Yeah, I do.
Uh, go ahead, President Hirsch.
I was just going to ask Elder Mieske. What, I mean, the recommendations are kind of vague. I mean, is there more strict guidelines that you guys are going to like, you know, reference? I mean, there's some great consulting firms that do this for a living. I mean, and other cities have ordinances that include this. Was that discussed or did you purposely leave it more? I don't know. I mean, it's very, you know, not very, I don't know, specific, I guess the word I'm thinking of.
We did discuss it and we thought that it was more specific. It, it has a tendency to have coming in of the, of, of problem solving. This gives latitude. It allows the planning department to work with developers to come with a decent, a decent product, but also at the same time puts the developers on notice that a rectangle or engineered solution is not necessarily what we want.
Were you thinking about other ecological services that each of these might include like different habitats for different species or?
No, this is a, this is a function, this, this is a, a function of storm water retention, detention. Other, other parts of this are, you know, that's, that's the specific reason for having these facilities. The other parts of what you're talking about would be The other parts of, of, uh, what you're talking about would be, are great. Uh, but it's, it's an extra cost that most developers are not going to want to do, and that we we hope they would do something, but doesn't necessarily mean they have to. I mean, this is in the, this is ordinance driven.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions or comments on this one, or from Alders?
I could add something, Tim.
Sure, go ahead, Alder Person Hunt.
Um, the, uh, kind of, uh, active word is the curvilinear word. It means we just want to use natural curving lines, not hard square corners, uh, just anything to soften the look of the retention basin so that it looks, uh, more natural and less hard and square. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that clarification. And I would say that in the proposal from fifty-one West, um, you know, we did try to incorporate that into the, the final design, and the developer was, was receptive to the idea. You know, I think the, the biggest concern for them is always whether it's going to take up more land or be additional cost, but I think there's a way to find that balance, and I think that's the intent of, of the ordinance change. Um, anything from, uh, your end, Director Shiel?
No, I think it was captured well. I, I think it offers some latitude, but it, it, it frames the desire of the community to make some aesthetic improvements to these facilities. Um, and I think it's captured, we did utilize, uh, Kenosha as an example. Their community uses language very similar to this. And becoming very prescriptive in standards may, may create, um, unexpected challenges. So I think this approach, we should give this a, a good try. I think it'll work.
All right, so this one will be back, um, at the next meeting. If you have any questions between now and then, um, feel free to either send them to Rodney, and, uh, he can deliver them to, uh, Public Works. Next item is R twenty-four, twenty-twenty-one, and this one also came from Public Works, Alder Person Mieski.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, this is Resolution twenty-four of twenty-twenty-one. City of Stoughton to approve policy for mailbox repair or replacement when damage is inflicted by equipment or personnel of the city of Stoughton. Uh, this was recommended four to zero on February eighteenth. And this basically is a policy to allow, uh, repair of mailboxes that have been damaged by the city and I so move.
Is there a second? And there is a second. Uh, anything else you want to add, Alder Person Mieski?
No, I think the policy is pretty self-explanatory.
All right, and I thought I saw Director Abir on here earlier. Anything you want to add? Um, I don't know, maybe Brett's not available. He's doing double duty tonight. There's two meetings going on, so he might be.
Your Honor, I just have one comment.
Sure.
Yeah, the person who will be repairing the post is going to be from Public Works and is not necessarily a postal worker.
Hey, hey, guys, I'm here.
Oh, okay. Yeah, did you hear Sid's comment?
Yeah, he's, he's been, uh, he's been dying to tell that joke. He, he told me last week he was gonna tell it, so he got his shot. So, so this, this takes, uh, our common practice and puts it into an actual policy. Uh, this is nothing new on how we treat these, uh, mailbox incidents. We have surprisingly very few throughout the year. Um, it's not just snowplows either. It could be, you know, tree work or sweepers. But basically, it's five or less throughout the course of the year. Any, any questions on sort of the, the meat and potatoes of the policy, or?
Do, um, I have a question.
Oh, sure, go ahead, Alder Person Haley.
So at the ten day period, um, when you have complaints, is it usually pretty much right away that someone, uh, gets to the city about that?
Yeah, it's usually the, the next day or that afternoon, uh, we receive a complaint, um, that their, their mailbox got hit. Um, the, the biggest thing is that we do investigate those because sometimes a mailbox was in disrepair before we even got there. Um, so that's the biggest thing is that they need to notify us. We do our investigation. Uh, you know, we're, we're pretty liberal with it. Um, however, there is some times where mailboxes are put together with, you know, shoestrings and duct tape. So, um, if they're not put together according to USPS, uh, guidelines, we do not replace those either.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from Alders? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Uh, next item is R twenty-five of twenty-twenty-one, and this one comes from the plan commission. Alder Person Caravelo.
And, oh, that's, okay, thank you. Uh, this is Resolution twenty-five of twenty-twenty-one. Approving a conditional use permit request by Kirk Biedrowski for property at seventeen twenty U.S. Highway fifty-one, one thirty-eight in Stoughton, Wisconsin. Uh, the site plan dated February first twenty-one and traffic flow plan dated February eleventh twenty-one, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right. And there's a second, Alder Person Caravelo.
And this is a request for indoor commercial entertainment restaurant use and for in-vehicle sales and service for a drive-through uh, at the former bank, uh, to convert the former bank building, uh, into a restaurant with a drive-through, and the, the tenant would be, or the entity that would be leasing it would be a Starbucks coffee.
All right, thank you. Are there any initial questions or comments?
Uh, was there a public hearing on this, or have you gotten many responses from the, the community regarding this? Resolution?
There was a public hearing held at the plan commission. Um, there was a limited number of participants that actually spoke at the public hearing. A number of, uh, submittals had been related, more related to the mobile vending um, discussion that the plan commission is having. Um, but I, there was not an out point of, of, uh, concern about this UP request.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
I would add that. Sorry, go ahead. Go ahead, Alder Person Caravelo, go ahead.
There was actually, uh, among the plan commission, uh, there was considerable amount of discussion, uh, regarding ingress and egress and traffic flow throughout this site, but that was really, more from plan commission members trying to, you know, think of logical, uh, logical ways for traffic to best work in this site.
So with that said, so I was just looking at what you presented here. So there's only that one kind of driveway in and out. There isn't another driveway coming in from the other side from the pick and save parking lot?
That is correct.
There's only one entrance point into this parcel. As depicted, there's two exit points that would be allowed out of the parcel. The one on the northeast corner and the one in the southwest corner of, of that parcel would allow for exiting.
And where is the entry?
In the southwest corner.
Thank you. Um, I have a question.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Just, uh, even though it's, it's, um, mostly unrelated, what is, um, what is the timeframe for the, um, uh, the mobile business and that hearing on the one hundred eighty day permit and all of that? What's the sense of the timing of that one? Just because I'd like to have a sense of that as we're making this, this, this resol, this, uh, ordinance in place.
Yeah, the mobile food vending is going back to plan commission for a public hearing, uh, in April. Uh, we have, we presented, um, versions for discussion purposes at last night's plan commission meeting, and that will be submitted for a public hearing, I believe, at the April meeting.
If things go as you foresee, and if there's going to be changes to that current status of that, when do you anticipate that could be approved? The future timeframe, I know that it's by no means a commitment, but I'm trying to get a sense of the.
If, if I could, Gene, that, once that gets, this is Greg, uh, once it leaves, uh, planning commission, it will, will have to go through public safety as well. Uh, so, uh, because we have some input on that. So it's, it's hard to tell when that's going to be done. But, but, uh, I, I wouldn't anticipate that being completed until May at the earliest.
Yeah. The, the way I would describe this one here that we're approving tonight is the conditional use permit, and you might recall, under Act sixty-seven, you know, unless there's overwhelming evidence for us not to approve something, we're really limited in what we can do, and certainly the city attorney could, you know, could give you more specific information on that. One thing we did want to do was make sure that we had a traffic flow uh, pattern figured out before we approved it, and that's what this illustrates. Of the ordinance on the food cart is something that it's going to be through the zoning code. Um, so that's kind of a different process than this. Uh, but certainly, you know, there's been some interest on both. And, uh, people will have an opportunity at the public hearing to hear, um, what we're proposing.
Um, thank you. I just, I just was, um, wanting to just understand, um, being in my first room on council and, and that balance between how we build a business with bigger business and smaller business, and even our, our public entities, the difficult decision with the senior center. I just kind of want it out there that I believe that we can try to work that all exist side by side, particularly when there's good planning and, and, and it's on radar and we're, we're working at it. So thank you.
Sure, and thank you for your, your thoughts because we share them. Any other questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed to this one? And any of sub, abstentions? That motion does carry. Next item is, uh, mayor's appointment. We have a, a vacancy on Opera House Board, and I'd like to thank, uh, Jen Wilbur for her service. And, uh, we do have an application that was filled out by Jill Patterson. And you might recall that Jill is on the school board, and she's been a volunteer at the Opera House for quite some time. So when the position became available, she showed interest, so I would entertain a motion to approve that appointment.
I so move.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
And any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion does carry. Thank you. Next item is R twenty-seven of twenty-twenty-one, and this one comes from public safety, Alder Person Jensen.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Swatley. Uh, Resolution, uh, yes. It's Resolution twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-one, Resolution, uh, urging state legislators to oppose the passage of pending state legislation affecting the sale of alcohol, and, uh, I would move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Alder Person Jensen, you want to walk us through this one? Uh, that night, so I didn't participate.
Yeah, that, that's okay. So I, you can, you can read through it and, like, span it out here. Uh, the, basically, uh, it, it would affect, um, our, um, some of our smaller businesses in town here, and, uh, it was, it, it's, it's just, uh, it, it didn't make a lot of sense to, uh, to us. Uh, it looked, to me, it seemed like it was, uh, the state legislature again, uh, kind of putting its thumb on, on, uh, the, the communities and preventing us from doing our job. Uh, so this is, um, our way of saying, hey, please, uh, stop doing that and, uh, uh, give us some leeway here.
All right, so what you're saying is, is if we wanted to pass something like this locally, we could?
The, while the, as it is right now, we have, oh, God, if I can remember exactly how this. Oh, God, uh, let's see, Resolution, I have to refresh my memory.
I can just help answer questions.
I'm sorry.
I said I can help, uh, walk you through this a little bit.
Okay, please do.
Yeah, please.
And so this piece of legislation would allow for, oh, Chief is down here as well, um, would allow for, uh, bars and restaurants to sell cocktails to go. So right now, under our ordinances, they can sell drinks to go, but they have to be in their original containers. So the alcohol has to be separate from whatever it's mixed with in order to sell it to go. Um, and this piece of legislation would allow the bar to actually mix the drink and give it to the customer to take home with them. And if this change were made, um, the city wouldn't be able to have any other ordinance that wanted, that would prevent this. So, um, we could, we couldn't say that they couldn't do it because it was written in the state statutes.
Good luck.
Okay.
And I don't know if Chief has anything to add.
Do you have anything to add, Chief?
Well, it, it really just boils down to sending a message to the legislature that these decisions wrong at the local level, as they have been for hundreds of years since we've, uh, since the state first put in chapter one twenty-five, which governs all the, the liquor laws. We're unique in Wisconsin in comparison to a lot of other states in that we do give much more control to local communities to decide what's best for their specific community instead of having a state board or the state legislature, in this case, uh, dictating what, uh, what locals can control and what locals can't. Um, so this is really about your ability to, um, set the liquor law, uh, the liquor provisions for the community that fit the community norms.
Okay, thank you. And my understanding, if this resolution passes, we're gonna send it up toward the Capitol?
Correct.
So, uh, correctly if I'm wrong, with our resolution for the COVID response for restaurants and bars downtown, they currently can sell uh, mixed drinks in a container that is sealed, right?
Sealed with separate, the alcohol is separate and sealed, yes.
I thought they were mixed.
No, no, uh, what they would do is they would, um, like, if you were getting a, uh, old fashioned, you'd get the old fashioned with the mixer and, and all of the fixings, and then you'd get a, a small container of, uh, of Corvall or whatever, um, along with it, and you would have to take it home and make. along with it, and you would have to take it home and mix it yourself.
Right, but that's what the, that's what's being proposed in legislation, but I thought Stilton's COVID response was that at a restaurant, if patrons could buy mixed drinks as long as it was sealed, it wasn't separated into little bottles of vodka or not. Am I mistaken?
I think what you're referring to is the emergency outdoor dining and alcohol order, which is good until the end of May, but I think those drinks are limited into the designated areas based on the site plans that were submitted. And Chief or Attorney Dragney or Rodney can jump in here.
No, because I thought I saw people, I'm not going to, this establishment leaving with mixed drinks in a, a container with their to-go packages. So maybe I misunderstood what they were actually being given.
Yeah, I think currently if they were to take something home, it would have to be separated and sealed like, like Greg mentioned, if it was a mixed drink, or if it was like a beer growler, they could do that. But they certainly couldn't have a mixed drink in a cup that was mixed up to go right now. They could have that out on the designated area on the sidewalk, but they couldn't leave the premises like that, or the sidewalk like that.
Can I ask a question of the chief?
Sure.
So Chief, in light of, if I remember at our committee at Public Safety, when we discussed this, we see, we see this as a chance to try to help get some uniform standards in the state in regards to COVID, of course, that's how this comes up. But we're also noting as a committee that this then puts this power at the level of the state indefinitely. And that's the, that's the big change is that we can have local ordinances, and even though this is seen as a positive thing, it, it, it's, as you said, it takes it away, even though it might be in light of COVID and emergency orders and all of that. This then would take precedence if this state law passes, and, and we would lose the ability to set those standards regarding hard alcohol.
Yes, that's correct, and you, you've summarized it very well, and that's exactly the meaning here is that, that, you know, I think the emphasis from the committee was, is that the committee felt that, you know, locals should be in control of these decisions. And if you try to implement rules that were put in place from emergency and to make them forever rules and, and change the, the game, it, it, it just is going to, there's really a lot of concern about this, you know, expanding the availability of alcohol to underage people, making it easier for older age people to get a hold of alcohol. And that's really where the, you know, it's getting lost in the conversation at the state level. So it really, this resolution just tells the state, hey, leave the laws alone. We'll decide locally what we want to do for our community.
And, and if I can also just add one quickie on that is that my hope is that we as a body would be in favor of this resolution, and that shouldn't replace us as individuals trying to contact our state senators and letting them know as well and urging our constituents to do the same.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments on this one?
I, I have one thing that I actually want to point out. If you bring the resolution back up at the top of the page, I believe there's an error, unless I am mistaken, where it says it is being brought by the, or the plan commission approved or recommends approval at the top in the introduction box, says Plan Commission recommends common council approval.
All right, we'll get that corrected.
Also, there's another typo later on where the number one is inserted in the middle of a word. Remember this resolution, I think it might be the last whereas on that first page. Yep. The last whereas. There is the last line.
The word restrictions has a, a number one instead of an R.
It's subliminal.
That's right.
We'll get those cleaned up. Any other questions or comments? Uh, here are none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? And that motion does carry.
Your honor, your honor, I did abstain.
Okay. Well, note that you abstain. Next item is item Resolution 28 of 2021. And this one here came from Finance Committee, Alderson Schumacher.
Thank you, Mayor. R 28, 2021, a resolution authorizing city staff to forego the small claims process related to the amounts owed by Budmar LLP and B&amp;B Investment Company LLP and write off the remaining balance of $5,344.22. This was brought in Finance February 23rd, 5-0 approval, and I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Would you care to elaborate, Alderson Schumacher?
Um, like, every effort was made to, to make these collections of these tax revenues that were due based on an annexation agreement by those two parties. And they, the two entities had been dissolved since then, so the, the cost in order to small claims litigate that would probably exceed what the, what the amount we would have remitted from that.
All right. Any questions or comments from Alders?
I think this is also the, the last time that this instance will come up, if I remember right.
All right, there, I, I guess are there lessons to be learned from this? In any, in any case?
Yeah, I think there is. We talked about that a little bit. This is part of an annexation agreement. And I think the lesson learned there is, is this is money that I believe is, the township gets five years of tax collections after an annexation. And in this particular case, the LLP dissolved. And I think the lesson learned is, is to get that money upfront as part of the annexation agreement.
This is, this is Matt. I can just say a couple, a couple more things about that. So the way the law is written, if a city annexes territory from a town, it's actually the city's responsibility. The city will collect the tax revenue from the property and did here. So the property owners did pay their property taxes to the city. The statute required the city to reimburse the town for what the town's lost tax revenue would have been for five years. That, that has happened. In this annexation agreement, the city included language requiring three different parties to reimburse the city for that payment that the city would need to make to the town for that five-year period. So the property owners essentially were required to pay both their taxes to the city and to reimburse the city for an element of tax revenue that the city had to reimburse to the town. This particular issue is typically subject of negotiation in an annexation agreement. There's no requirement that the annexing party agree to make the payment. In this case, the city was successful in negotiating an agreement in which they did agree to make the payment. And the city was successful in collecting that payment from, I think, one of these entity, one of the three entities for all three years, two of the entities for four years, but apparently two of the entities dissolved after the fourth year. And it looks like the process of attempting to collect from them at this stage would be not worth the effort from a financial standpoint. You'd spend more money chasing the money than you would recover, and you may not recover at all. So I think the lesson is this, one, we should continue to try and negotiate agreements with annexing parties to recover these dollars where we can. There may be cases where we can't, where we can't accomplish that, where the party who's annexing is unwilling to pay it, and the city chooses to annex even without collecting that, even without that agreement. In those cases where we're successful negotiating an agreement to pay it, we should push to get the money paid as quickly as possible, all upfront, where we can. We won't always be successful in getting an agreement to that effect, but we can try for that. And we can try and secure those payment obligations in other ways. So, I mean, the lesson is, we do the best we can to negotiate the best agreement we can. And here we, we did negotiate an agreement that was largely successful, but not 100% successful through the entire five-year period. I will say this was a complicated annexation agreement. There were many other provisions that had to be addressed in this agreement and financial issues. And I think everything, I mean, everything went according to plan, except for this last, you know, $1,500 from B&amp;B and $3,700 from Budmar. So the lesson is, we do the best we can. Could we have done better here? I, I'm not sure that we could have. Had we pushed for more protection, we, we, you know, we may not have been able to get it. Honestly, I can't remember the specific, this goes back to, you know, 2014 or something like that. So I can't remember the precise details of the discussion of that particular issue.
Say, your honor? Uh, yeah, Matt, I have a question, or somebody else maybe, but it goes beyond the scope of this. But what allows, or who allows companies like this to dissolve an LLP? Is there any oversight on the dissolution of an LLC? Who, who's in charge of that? Is there any public entity that controls that? That situation where somebody just gets out of an LLP?
Well, I'm not really the right person to answer the question because, you know, it's kind of a corporate law question that I, I don't have a lot of experience with. You know, but it's not unusual for partnerships or other entities to, you know, to change, to dissolve, to be acquired, things, things like that can happen. But in terms of whether there's a governmental entity that regulates that process, I'm not, I'm not really the best person to speak to that.
Because it seems to me, it just seems to me that somebody can just get out of financial liabilities or responsibilities by dissolving an LLP, and that, that, that just doesn't seem right to me, that there should be some entity that controls the dissolution of an LLP.
From what I remember back in college and my tax courses, LLPs and any sort of partnership, they, you can almost equate them to individual sole proprietor, if you will. I mean, the IRS ultimately governs them on the backside, but there's really no government watchdog watching over them in terms of how they operate in dissolution. And that's part of why people get together and create LLPs, because they're just limited to the liability of the money that they put in initially. So they're, they're attractive because there, there isn't much governance over them.
Well, and, and it may be that the city could be successful in, in pursuing claims against the individuals who are involved here and, and attempts to recover. The, the problem is, the question I was asked is, is that likely to be worthwhile enterprise? And my, my opinion was, given the dollars involved, because even if you're successful, you're not going to recover your attorney's fees. You're going to have to pay the legal costs associated with recovering these dollars. And in my estimation, it's a complicated enough situation, so you're going to end up spending more than you would recover, even if you were successful. So my opinion was, it's probably better to move on.
And just one final comment then, Matt, is that if we would run into a situation where it would be a $10,000 or $20,000 loss to the city, that might be something we would pursue either, either to, to look at, was it, was it legal for that LLP to dissolve? And/or should we go big, should we go back to the individuals owning that LL, that LLP? So, yeah, I agree. I mean, if it, but, but there has, there, there has to be a way for the city to be able to recoup if it's, if it's, you know, if it's a substantial amount of money and I, because that doesn't seem fair to the city to just write it off if it would be, if it would be an expensive proposition.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, here are none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. All right, next item is Resolution 29 of 2021. This one comes from the Finance Committee, Alderson Schumacher.
Thanks, Mayor. Resolution 29, 2021 is a resolution authorizing city staff to enter into an agreement with Ellers to create Tax Increment District Number Nine. This went through Finance on February 23rd, 5-0 approval on that one. The, the fiscal impact on there is capped at a maximum of $15,500. That would be reimbursed by the developer. So moved.
All right, and a second, anything else you want to add, Alderson Schumacher?
This just gets the, gets the ball rolling on getting the, getting an agreement written and the research involved in that, that we'll review at a later date.
All right, any questions or comments about the, the services that will be provided in the packet?
I just have a comment.
Uh, go ahead, Alderson, my asking.
You know, you're, you're going ahead with a, developing a TIF that council hasn't even agreed to, if they actually, actually want it, first of all, but you're putting the cart in front of the horse. And I'm opposed to this TIF, just through the facts I had said before. Yeah, I said, it's basically, if you okay this, you're basically, you're saying that the council is going to create this TIF no matter what. Because you're not going to spend or have the developer spend the amount of money they're spending to do this, especially for a TIF where the TIF money will go to basically the servicing of a single developer for his land and the extended land beyond it, which is all his also. There's going to be a problem with this.
Okay. I guess, you know, my response would be is that we were, I think there was a motion at a previous meeting that really instructed staff to move forward with this. And I don't know if this necessarily commits us to doing the TIF. What it does is that allows us to prepare documents with our financial consultant. I think there's going to be some other opportunities here for the council to further scrutinize the request. Certainly Director Friedel or Attorney Dragney can weigh in on that.
Before you do that, this reminds me like hell of a lot of Kell West, and I'll use the same phrase I used before. This is like boiling frogs. Same, exact same thing. You know, again, just you, we'll comment on this later. We'll, we'll move this farther down the line. We can, you know, what, in the future, we can talk about this more. We'll do this and that. And you incrementally move it, move it, move it, move it. And you incrementally move it, move it, move it, move it. Next thing you know, it's done. And you're boiling frogs.
Well, as I mentioned, the council did take action on this and we're following the directions of the council. So, you know, I, I have to respectfully disagree with, with your opinion on that. Anything you want to add, Director Friedel?
Yeah, I can just touch on the agreement itself. Elers did phase this out, so they're really just moving forward with the phase one, the feasibility analysis. The last step of that would be to present to the council to basically see if you want to move forward with phase two. And so it's, while it is money out of pocket, that's going to be reimbursed by the developer, it is just the first step to bring back more information and, and give you guys another crack at it.
Jamin, this is Matt. You said the developer is going to reimburse the cost. I, I don't recall that we have an agreement that requires the developer to pay this TIF creation cost that we're talking about now. Am I?
There's no signed agreement at this point, that's based on verbal conversations with, with project board at this point. And I, I should have mentioned that here, we mentioned it at Finance. It's more of a verbal at this point. The, the risk that we're opening ourselves up to is the $6,000 for the feasibility analysis.
Your honor, I have a quick comment if I could.
Sure, Alder Person Borzma.
And that is, I, I really think that when we're, when we're looking at TIF, we really have to look at whether or not this is going to be good for the city. And, and I think we have to scrutinize and analyze whether or not we're going to get the bang for the buck on it, you know, whether the increment is going to be right, correct, and, and if it's going to be beneficial to the city. And, so I'm not, so I, I'm just responding to, to the comment by Tom. And that is that, I think we, I think the city council has to, has to look at each one of these TIFs, whether they're a good idea or not, and that is, are we getting bang for the buck? What's the bottom line for the city? That's, that's just my comment and I, I won't be, you know, dealing with this in the future, but it's just an advice to the council that we look at each one of these and, and determine the best course of action. But, but unless you go forward to looking at the issues, how are you going to know? You know, and I think that that's what the council wanted to say, move forward with it and take a look at it. So that, that's just my thought.
All right, any other questions or comments from elders on this one?
Question, here.
Highly, and I think Legaki after that.
I think I'm going to agree that this is premature step at this point, especially if we don't even have an assurance that this would be reimbursed.
And did I hear Alder Person Legaki?
Yes. So I, I guess in hearing these, the title of this resolution is just the agreement, but then the, the terminology to create Tax Increment District Number Nine. Are we in essence creating? I mean, I know a lot goes into that, but by approving this today, am I hearing in some of the opposition that they say we're sort of going forward and sort of telegraphing that we're doing that? Is that really what this question is? I think I'm asking that of, of Alder Mieski, who first brought it up. I'm, I'm looking at the title of this and it's a really strong title and I'm wondering if it represents what? Other, other thoughts on that? So is this, is this resolution aptly named?
Yeah, I think the resolution was based on the vote that we took at the previous council meeting and then, and the package here really shows what Elers would do and, and preparation for a potential TIF. They could do the work and, and we could come to the conclusion that, you know, maybe it's, it's not wise to move forward, but we, you know, we're looking at trying to get the information you need in order to make that decision.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Alder Person Hunt, go ahead.
If I'm understanding this correctly, this is a step we need to take in order to allow Elers to go forward with their participation in the process of investigating whether or not this is a reasonable circumstance for starting a TIF. It, it's really the request of our financial advisor that we're honoring here. I don't think we're going beyond that. We're just trying to get the proper paperwork signed so that they can conduct their business and meet their fiduciary requirements, from what I've read. So I don't think it goes beyond that to starting the TIF.
Yeah, I think what it is, is it's, it's a feasibility analysis, as it states in the packet here.
And if I can ask, and then our price to go forward is the risk that we encounter is, is a maximum of $6,000, if I understood Jamin correctly?
That's the cost of phase one. And if the council shows not to move past the feasibility step, then Elers would just back off and there won't be any additional costs related to it. Elers purposely kind of broke this down through phases, understanding that there's a number of steps along the way that council needs to review and agree to. So right now, even though we're signing the agreement, Elers, they're only going to move forward with phase one at this point for $6,000.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, here are none, all in favor of the rest.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So the, on the city website, the Planning and Development Department has special pages, landing pages for the various Kettle Park West questions. I'm wondering if that was a particular, particular to that project that, because, because that was so controversial in, in the past years, or whether similar requests are going to have those directories as well?
Was that in the phase one or the phase two?
I'm seeing pages for Kettle Park West and rezoning the meadows at Kettle Park West. I think that it's, it's lumped together phase one and phase two for KPW.
Yeah, there's a lot, a lot of complexity to that project and oftentimes we were posting things out there and directing packets, also look at that location because the materials were so large, you couldn't even put them into council packets, for example. But certainly, we can, we can post information about each development out there as well.
I think that would be helpful to have it all in one place as we go for, as we, you know, go forward on this.
Your honor, may I make a, can I, can I make a suggestion? Looks like there's going to be some opposition to this resolution and I would ask for a real call vote.
Okay. All right, any other comments before we do a roll call vote? Here are none, Holly, you want to do the roll call, please?
Just a second.
All right.
I have to call up my list here. Borzma?
Aye.
Caravello? Alder Person Caravello?
Aye.
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 Hirsch?
Aye.
Hunt?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Alder Person Hunt, I didn't hear you.
Oh, it was muted. I say aye.
Okay, Jensen?
Aye.
Legaki?
Aye.
Mieski?
No.
Reeves?
Aye.
Schumacher?
Aye.
And Topolsky?
Aye.
That motion carries and a vote of 10 to 2.
Thank you. Next item should be R30 of 2021, and this one came from the Finance Committee, Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Resolution 30, 2021, a resolution by Common Council of City of Stoughton approving additional work with True North Consultants for Services Related to Environmental Consulting for City and RDA Redevelopment Authority lands on Fourth Street and East Fourth, East South Street. This came through tonight. We needed to move this one along to keep dual with the entire RDA project timeline in that area. Impact on it was going to be 31,500 and I so move.
Second. And there's a motion in a second. Any further discussion, Alder Person Schumacher?
This is one, I will have Director Friedel go through some of the details about this one so that everyone's clear about what, what is happening with this and where monies and that are coming from.
Okay, I, yeah, I can touch briefly on the, the financial piece of it. I think Director Shiel will probably have to touch on the more technical pieces of it. There is some information at the tail end of your packet and really it's, it's a, it's hard to read, I know that. There, there are templates that I'm accustomed to looking at, but it's, it's really just to give you an idea of the, the cash flow for 2021 and TIF eight. And really, we're, we're kind of focusing on the 2021 line at this point. As you work your way across from left to right, you can see the revenues and expenditures and how they work out, basically where we end up in the annual and cumulative balance at this point. Again, this is all forecasted at this point, but it, it is kind of to serve two purposes. One is to show you the way things are forecasted right now, and obviously this is pending future land sales with the Brink Development Developers Agreement, you know, timing of the riverfront and grant monies and things like that. So this is a moving target, I'm going to be honest with you on that one. The way things stand right now and the way everything is forecasted, TIF number eight can handle this budget adjustment. And even though it's 31,500 in the resolution, it's, we're really just asking to exceed the initial budget, which was actually a 19 item with the Public Works Building, the initial budget was $34,000. We're basically asking for an additional $16,000 to be approved to exceed that, that original budget for some of the remediation work that needs to be done. The other point of this was to show you in terms of the overall dollars that are planned to be spent and collected in TIF number eight in 2021, $16,000 isn't going to make or break it one way or the other. So even though this is forecasted, the number should shake out pretty closely as, as things progress with the RDA and discussions with Brink. Obviously, all that information's going to come back through the Finance Committee and the Council for future decisions. And this is just a piece of that puzzle to keep the project moving. So I just wanted to, so you could kind of see how all of the money is working within TIF eight, how the TIF four donations are impacting it, because we referenced that within the resolution as well. So I wanted it to make at least some sense why we're pointing, pointing to TIF four donations going into TIF number eight, how all of that's going to flow through in 2021. I know that's a lot to take in, so I'd be happy to answer any questions about the financial side of it.
Are there any questions from council?
I just have a comment, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that there was a typo in the, everybody can see that, but the agenda that it didn't list R30. So I, I wanted to clarify that, just to make sure that everybody knows that even though the agenda wasn't completely right, we are talking about R30.
All right, any questions or comments from council members? And was there anything you wanted to add, Rodney?
Yeah, I think it's important to highlight, this is really to expand the environmental consulting activities that had already begun on the Public Works Facility. We'd been doing some site investigation work and as a result of the redevelopment plan by Brink being proposed, as well as recognizing the RDA and the city on numerous sites there, looking at that, there was a need to really put together a materials management plan for the redevelopment. So really looking at how the, the development would progress and what type of potential soil mitigation might be necessary, where the utilities and/or building footprints would be placed as part of this project. So that's one aspect of the expanded scope of services. The other is really took at the request of the DNR. So the environmental consultants from True North and myself met with the, the appointed DNR representative for the site. And it came out of that discussion that it was recommended to have individual site remedial action plans. So there's four different sites, if you will, in this campus, the Highway Trailer Building, the Mill Fab Site, the former Public Works Site, and the former Carpet Warehouse Site. The DNR was supportive of actually having this combined into an entire campus-wide plan for soils, material management, as well as site remedial action plans. So the approach has been endorsed by the DNR representative and outlined as part of this scope of services to help move the redevelopment, well, actually to allow the redevelopment project to continue on the timeline that we're working with.
All right, any questions or comments for Rodney on this one? All right, here are none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. The next item, Ordinance Eight of 2021, should say that it's a first reading, so I just want to clarify that. And this one came from Community Affairs, Council Policy, which is Alder Person Haley.
Yep, so this is a first reading of Ordinance Eight. We brought this up as hopefully a way to bring some diversity to our standing committees on council. It would add up to two City of Stoughton non-council residents to each of the standing committees, excepting, with the exception of the Personnel Committee, because that's hiring and firing pretty private stuff. So the up to two people, that was to cover if we were not able to recruit. But we thought on CACP that this would kind of foster engagement, diversity, and hopefully, you know, future leaders in the, in the city to be able to step up and help us make decisions on the committees. And then this would, committees would make recommendations to the council, so all, all final decisions on, on ordinances, resolutions and such would be made by elected officials. That's kind of a rundown of how our discussion went in, in committee.
Yeah, I would just add that if, for those of you that were at or watched the Plant Commission meeting last night, there was an, an example where we had a community member from the Tree Commission there talking about tree and plant species. And the other thing it does is it brings people that are out in a community that has expertise in a particular area. It offers us an opportunity to, to learn from them and also get a different perspective than just, you know, city staff and, and elders. So I, I really think that this would be, you know, a positive addition. Obviously, there would be some transition time as far as, as. It offers us an opportunity to learn from them and also get a different perspective than just, you know, city staff and alders. So I really think that this would be, you know, a positive addition. Obviously, there would be some transition time as far as, you know, getting everybody kind of up to speed on the issues and Robert's rules, but I'm pretty confident that city staff and committee chair people can certainly work with community members and get them up to a level fairly quickly. This is up for a first reading. Are there any initial thoughts or comments?
I just have one. And that is, I appreciate, I appreciate CACP not including personnel in this. We do discuss some pretty sensitive issues related to personnel and hiring and firing and discipline and that kind of thing in Personnel Department. So I appreciate carving out that section for personnel.
Yeah, and you could see in your packet here, I put together a chart of some of the other communities to give you kind of a flavor of what's happening out there, and I was actually surprised on how many communities currently do this and, you know, on a variety of committees, and actually, some of them even have more citizen members on there than either trustees or council members, which really surprised me. And from talking to other mayors and city administrators, it seems to be working out pretty well for them. Obviously, this is new territory for us, so if we move forward with it, you know, there'll be, there'll be some adjustment and some learning that'll have to occur.
Say one note in here, in the second bit of red underlined text where we have end up to, I think we missed a two in there. We have to have a two-two in there.
Oh, okay.
I have three questions.
All right, go ahead.
And there, a couple of them might be somewhat naive here, but are the two people who are appointed, do they need to be from different districts? Because otherwise, you'd have an alder and two people all from the same district, and that would heavily weigh perhaps their view.
I think the thinking at this point is we really didn't want to limit our options. And certainly, what will happen is if somebody chooses to want to be on a committee, they'll fill out an application, and then I would review them and I would make recommendations, and then the city council would have to confirm my appointments. So ultimately, the council could make that decision at that time.
Okay, and then there's also no concern about open meetings sorts of issues? Even maybe the spirit of open meetings? In other words, an alder with the two citizens could get together for coffee and determine, you know, share their attitude on an issue? Is that not?
Well, the open meetings rules would apply to these committee members, so.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, so the members, members of the committees will need to follow the rule with respect to, they can't, they can't have a meeting that isn't properly noticed and so on.
Okay, yeah, because that would be part of the onboarding for these people, because they may not be familiar. And then the other thing was, I wondered if there would be term limits? I mean, if somebody could just be reappointed annually for an indefinite time, whereas, you know, we go through an election. So there's that aspect also that I was wondering about.
I think our feeling was is we were going to appoint them on a yearly basis. Some communities will do one year, some of them do three years, but I think initially, we would do a one year and see how that goes. And then, you know, the hope would be is the community member would want to continue, and we would want them to continue. And we do that now on some of our non-standing committees and our boards and our commissions, and it seems to be working out pretty well.
Okay, all right. I guess if I were a new person and I were, you know, if I applied and I were appointed, I think, I think somehow that would be good to, to sort of give people that background so they aren't surprised if, you know, maybe they start down a path that they really, that they shouldn't have or something.
Sure. All right, good points. Thank you. Any other, do you see a handoff?
Yeah, I've got one, one further thing to add. In CACP, we did decide that it would be good if this passes to take another look at how it's going in six months and
Good.
see whether, whether we've got enough people, whether we're not training the people who have volunteered correctly. I think, I think all of that would fall under the check-in and.
Okay, I was going to suggest a pilot program, but I didn't want to go that far, but you took care of it.
What, if I could, what I would suggest is that we put a sunset clause on this to end it as of reconcil, our reorganization meeting of 2022. And then we could take another look at, you know, is it working? Are we having any issues with it? Are we, is it something that, are there, what other issues might come up? I'm not, right now, I'm not comfortable with this, right, the way it is. I just, I just see some issues with it. We have Article One, Section 2, 2-2 Code of Ethics. I mean, are they going to be following that Code of Ethics? I mean, it's going to take some time to instruct people, get them to understand. I also have a problem with, with having unelected people making decisions that, and I don't know, it's just, it just really doesn't feel real comfortable to me. But then, on the other hand, we have a person, Teresa, who comes to our public safety meetings, and her input is essential. So, you know, I'm a bit torn on this, and so I would really appreciate if we could amend this. Well, not now, of course, but at the next meeting to put a sunset clause in this and then take a good look at this again next March.
And Greg, we discussed a lot of those things that you just brought up with the same kind of feeling that you had, and then we realized that, one, subcommittees are actually just advisory. They're not actually making decisions or recommendations. And two, we have people on the Police and Fire Commission, RDA, Plant Commission, Utilities, all that have community members that are not elected on those committees, and they seem to do their job very seriously and do it.
Yeah, you got to remember, though, like, the utilities and planning commission are statutory. They're not by ordinance or by, you know, by city ordinance. So they're covered under different rules. So when you can, also, also the Police and Fire Commission, they're covered under different rules because they're statutory. So you're talking about, you know, different, different areas here. So it's just something that I need to get comfortable with. So I think that if we, if we did do this, if we did it for a year and then took another look at it, that would, that would, I think, probably satisfy most of the, of the concerns that any of us might have with it. And I'm hoping that would work out, because I seriously think that, you know, there are people like Teresa. Would, I would hope that if, if this does go through, that she applies and we can get her on, on public safety.
I also, I also think there is a benefit, oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to ask, thank you very much. I wanted to ask Greg. Greg, rather than suggesting that we put a sunset clause onto this resolution from CACP, would you be willing to consider the fact that we had set and we felt we saw the wisdom in getting started? And that they don't, they're simply standing committees, they are advisory, that we give a chance to get these things in place and review all of these questions in six months? Rather than put a sunset clause on this, I really, I think it's a great idea, and I think there are samples of us of other cities that we could call on. I think our risk is small, and I think the chance to get more involvement and more diversity and more inclusion, this is an opportunity that I would hate to be lost on some of these details with us, knowing we want to review that light six months from now.
Well, that's, that's what a sunset clause does, is it gives you the opportunity to review it. It just, it does it, and it gives you a year. I don't think six months is going to be enough. I think you need the full year to see if this really works for you or not. And then, next, like I said, next March, CACP can look at it and say, hey, yeah, this is working great. Let's keep it and make that, make it a permanent change at that point. Otherwise, you know, we can just let it drop, and there's no issue with it then. We don't have to, you don't have to bring it back to council and say, well, this isn't working. Let's change it back again.
I would, I would say that I piggyback on Greg's comments to some extent, and whether or not there should be limits. So, so one person can't be on three committees, you know, at the same, you know, in the same cycle or whatever. That, you know, I think there may be some need to clarify a bit of these issues just by having a discussion, maybe next time. And I would advise the mayor to be very, very careful about, about appointing too many retiring council members.
I have, I have just a few comments.
You have to apply to that.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to, you know, I think this is very interesting. And even though, even though committees are advisory, that's really where the depth of discussion and debate seems to take place. So it always strikes me as key, and I, so I don't want to take that lightly, that function. The other thing is that as an alder, I'm focused on the common good, and I'm, I also am, have some concerns whether, whether citizen participants will be looking for some smaller issue or a private interest issue and not take that larger look unless, again, it's part, sort of part of an expectation for them. They don't take an oath. And of course, the great benefit of this idea, I think, is that we'll cultivate some wonderful candidates to run. That's, to me, that's, that's a wonderful plus about this is, you know, if we can convince someone to run for alder, we can say, you know, wouldn't you like to try at least applying for something you're really interested in? So that's, that's kind of the sum of what I thought.
Okay, those are all good thoughts. With the council rules, you know, the council can, a member can request to take a look at this at any time. And as I mentioned earlier, any appointments that I would make would have to be confirmed by the council. So I think that gives us, between us, the flexibility to seek the diversity that we're looking for so we don't have one particular retired council member on all the committees.
I get, I get the point, because I made it originally. But the other thing is that we, we are, you know, we as council people have some training, and that is, I think, just like an issue of recusal. Like, what about if this, you know, if it's an issue that, that affects that person's own property or whatever? That, that, I think there should be, I think we should be very careful about training people because we, we kind of have a built-in sort of view that of what kind of things we should be agreeing to or abstaining, you know, based on whether or not it's going to be personally affecting us. Just a lot of those little issues, I think, need to be disconsidered a bit, so.
This is Matt. I think you could invite them all to the council meeting you have after the spring election where I give a presentation on open meetings law, ethics, public records, all of that, and that would give them at least a start on the training.
That would be great.
All right, any other questions or comments? This will be back in a couple of weeks. We'll kind of digest some of the thoughts that we've heard tonight. And, you know, if there's something that you want to follow up on, I would encourage you to try to, you know, draft some language before the meeting and send it to Holly.
I move to adjourn.
All right.
I'll let you have that one.
All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Yeah, I have no auto-voter.
Yeah, you made the motion. Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody. Good night, everybody.